Welcome, everybody. It's 7:00 for the United States Department of Education Board of Education Board meeting. As the board members and administrators take their right to the decks, we will have a roll call. Mr. Gerber?
Here.
Dr. Lowry, are you in for the call?
Yes, sir.
We'll assume she's on her way. This may have is a... Away, we'll have to take that for now. She will not be here tonight. Mrs. Mall?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rutter?
Here.
Mr. Sanchez?
Here.
Mr. Bonjani?
Present.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
For our present, shall we rise and bow?
I'd like to meet you. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, as to my President and his Secretary of Defense, this meeting is for January 31st, 1975, issued by Secretary of Defense August 2nd, 2017. The United States Department of State Department's Secretary of Defense, Secretary Mark Gordon, my commission. Mr. O... Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
I'll be happy to report to the Superintendent's Board of Commissions, I just like to, first of all, want everyone to enjoy a good summer. And as I say on the tour, there'll be a lot of people doing a lot of good summer reading, right, Mr. Isola?
You bet.
So, again, that's compliments to our staff for being engaged during the summer break and encouraging their students to stay focused on improving their reading skills. It's tremendous, and it's true, to see on Twitter. Yeah, I wanted to just look back and just, I don't know if anyone had a chance to see this hard, but we have this posted online. It's a Journer piece that was published recently about the board's membership of the School Board Day. And I think it's a great read. Every parent out there in the district should have access to it. We can push it out, so I think it keeps you up quick. Again, I want to thank everybody involved in making it a reality, starting with our board members, Natalie, the Playmate Theater, Mr. Bonjani, the Community Learning Board, every board member for being involved, and of course, the leadership team here at the district for making it a reality. It was a tremendous success, and I enjoyed it, and I was able to participate in it. So, also, I'd like to mention a couple of things coming up. There's a hope for Howard Lender Fair. It's sponsored by the Howard Alliance and the Howard Police Athletic League. And as you know, the Howard Alliance is focused on a lot of community service, including primarily its drug prevention awareness. So, they're gonna have, they're doing a fundraiser for community prevention, free admission. It's gonna be at Southern Community and Richment Center, which for those who aren't familiar, they've been familiar with Kent Road, and by the Walmart, across from that is what was the Southern Elementary School. And that little school was closed, and it was converted to the Community and Richment Center. And it's a very, very successful community center there, with a lot of activities going on all the time. Next Wednesday, August 16th, from 5:30 to 8:30, and it's free for the kids, for the whole family. It'll be a lot of fun. So, again, I think that's also going to come out to people through, I don't know, have we sent this out, Mr. Isola? Yes? Okay, terrific. Hope everyone can hear this message before Wednesday can join us down there. And, you know, I think the last thing I'd like to talk about is, as we roll forward into the fall, and, you know, obviously, everyone's very busy working, getting ready for opening up schools in less than a month, right? But what we are gonna be looking at from the board here is our next retreat is on the 26th. Looking forward, I believe we have 100% participation, and I'm very excited about it. I know the agenda is getting very full, and it's gonna be a terrific, as always, interactive meeting, and it's open to the public. One of the things that's nice is when we sit down at a retreat, we're not here to conduct board visits, we're here to discuss policy and talk about the vision of the district. We work closely with our administrative leadership, and we come to recognize what's really important for all of us to focus on. And each retreat has been exceptional. Looking forward to this one, and we have a lot of good ideas to talk about and discuss. Because we are gonna be starting our strategic plan for the next five weeks' cycle, which is everything, that's the foundation for everything we do here at the board. So, again, with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Isola, for any further comments on your part.
Thank you, sir. I think the night will begin with recognition. We had originally invited our North TSA folks out, and South was gonna come the next week. We could have that. So, at our, I believe it's the 23rd, we'll be honoring our TSA folks, our students that participated in the work that happens around the TSA program that we're all familiar with. So, in an attempt to keep that together, we were able to offset the day's worst recognition for the TSA program to match up with those of their counterparts this summer. So, on August 23rd, we'll have a nice celebration for all of our members, and I think that's most appropriate. However, this evening, we do have one recognition of a staff member, which is, with the sauce of pride, who's the Red, he's here tonight with us. And what we want to do tonight is recognize him, who are being named, and as you all are aware from our previous board meetings, Schoology Ambassador of the Year. Quite frankly, it's a very distinguished award that's even was awarded to the folks at Schoology and by the great student leader of this board, who were able to send him to that national conference. And he is probably one of the things he learned and the folks he came in contact with. Without any further ado, and I probably think in some of our lines, like I do to all of you so often, I would ask that our director of innovation and technology, that they learned from the voting session, and tweet briefly at us even, and help us recognize Stephen Swan, how he was observed by O'Brien there.
Yes, I think he goes along, yeah.
Thank you. We have seven of them, but not all of them.
Yeah.
I guess Stephen's on down, and because he has his trophy that he won, and he does not let anyone hold it. The trophy is in his crystal, and he'll come around, once we recognize him, we'll show you exactly the render of this wonderful staff do that he continues to hold, he carries around with him, from what I understand. Yeah, he's come to the district a couple times, he's been towards it with him. He also had it on the plane when he was coming back from the Schoology next month, and from what I understand, the TSA stopped him, the system went off, so don't carry, please don't claim he will get stopped. But in terms of Stephen, Stephen, for those of you that were on board back then, I think it was October, we recognized Stephen. He was named Ambassador of the Year for Schoology. Schoology, each year, they select individuals who apply to be their ambassadors throughout the nation, and he was one of 75 that was chosen. And from there, he spent the entire year working with Schoology. He was an advocate for them in the nation, as well as in the district. He worked on things, data, opportunities that they had where they involved him in working on redesign aspects, testing them out. He also had individuals in the district join him. He's offered CEUs, done numerous things. He has been an asset to the district, especially with our launch of our money management system. And he's a pretty cool guy, even designed a 3D-printed bow tie, that's a Schoology bow tie. He was, everybody was jealous at the Schoology next conference, so you could see that Stephen is definitely dedicated. He is an individual that Schoology clearly recognized should be the only Ambassador of the Year. Another accomplishment that Stephen actually had was, he was also named or selected as Schoology Educator of the Year. But unfortunately, Schoology only allowed him to have one title, so he selected the ambassador one. Congratulations, Stephen. You are definitely someone that we can always call on, and I can't believe there will be a lot of people who only said you.
Yes.
Maybe so. So, congratulations.
There are people who want to see this online. You gotta do the alibi speech, just do the alibi speech of where's Schoology. It's over. Schoology is the environment for our students and teachers. Actually, we have a 21st century classroom, so students can submit assignments to teachers, teachers can network with each other. We can also have students participate in discussion. We really try to work to the next level. So, we can do all self-paced learning. Two minutes is not enough to explain the matter.
So, that's all you gave us to do the video on?
Just make sure. Stephen, on the elected board, thank you so much for your service of greatest investments we made. We're supposed to be happy to share. Everything we've invested in, we can. So, thank you for all the support, and thank you for the contributions, and for all the stuff, and anything else that we can say and talk about. Very, very happy to hear it.
Thank you all for being supportive this one.
Let's hear it.
Mr. Bonjani?
Yes.
Take a photo?
I was just adding that. I had a very good...
This is for you.
This is our school where I did my home care. So, if we don't get a few shots, we didn't want to report this time?
Yeah, I'm just really glad that joke we made back there.
Yes. He's already shining, he's already getting some of the box on. Yeah. The truth of the matter is that we can now, right ahead, Mr. O'Brien, our most valuable resource to care for our children and our staff, and the support staff in many ways is much appreciated. And Stephen is somebody who takes that responsibility seriously, and certainly is a colleague that so many folks love working with, because he's always sharing ideas and pushing innovation and concepts. So, Stephen, thank you for being part of great school literature, and quite frankly, being something that makes this school district great, is really what you're all about, so I appreciate that new. And I'll expect to see a tie soon, or maybe you can wear that in your corner, and we'll see. So, thank you, Stephen, congratulations. As I said, we're gonna table the other recommendations for our next board meeting. And at this time, I'll try to get right into the rest of the superintendent's update for our first meeting in August. Mr. O'Brien mentioned the wonderful hope for Howard Lender Fair, and I want to also encourage folks that are able to participate and attend to do so. It's for a great cause, so that's really important. Laptop distribution will be happening later this month for our middle school students in North, on the 21st, their 29th. And a middle school in South, we will take care of the distribution of laptops on the 22nd and the 28th. So, we're on time. Students will then arrive at school on Thursday with their laptops, and that's the, you know, best possible situation we can put them in to be prepared for their learning, so we're very happy about that. We will be hosting our first Open House for Realtors on August 22nd at 1:30. It's about a 90-minute presentation and interaction. That will take place at Memorial Elementary School in their media center. I provided a flyer to all the board members here this evening. We started pushing that out this afternoon, and we'll continue to do so in the morning. We are hopeful to be able to educate our Realtors that work in the local area, surrounding areas, about what our school district means to its community, and why we believe residents here are receiving quality education for their children, and be able to answer questions for them. Buying homes is a huge decision for our family, for individuals, and I can only imagine that Realtors deal with many questions regarding the purchase of a home as it relates to their local school district. So, we thought it would be beneficial to provide accurate information for our Realtors in the local area, and ensure that they can present that accurate information to their potential home buyers and customers. So, we'll be hosting that at Memorial later this month. I'm taking a little boy's treat just a second. Mr. O'Brien also held up the article that was in the most recent School Leader magazine. That's two editions in a row that Howard was included or featured in an article, and I'm very proud of that. It speaks volumes to our willingness to share the work that's happening in the partner of school districts and to celebrate the work. And this particular one, the article highlighted the Student Government, I call it, Student Board of Education Day. That was one right from this Malibu day's here, and it was really a great day. With those youngsters in mind, this is what I said, with those youngsters in mind, we have been grappling with future branding, strategic planning, and in K8 districts, it's sometimes perceived difficult to have students involvement in that level of conversation. What we have been talking about in the office a little bit is kind of creating action left, where we can have, we can invite members of that Student Board of Education to serve as participants in terms of future branding and future steps for the district. Again, on a very typically expert level, to get that involvement, I think, would be helpful for us and give us a perspective to the lens of the child, as well as being interactive with our students in ways that haven't been in the past. So, we're in our infancy, but if it's in the direction of the board, that we would like us to pursue that, I can reach out to some individuals that serve them, that's what they have an understanding of the work of the board, how it relates. And we can perhaps invite them for a session, or as our retreat, which would go through an exercise, not keeping them available all the time, maybe, you know, a 45-minute activity with the children, that kind of helps cheer us. So, and Mr. Dr. Lowry's not here, but certainly...
I think that's an excellent idea, and we're students, that's all we get, especially something as important as our branding, what we're all about, certainly a part of them. I think it's, it's making that much stronger. So, do I see a consensus to the board? Yeah, I think it's actually, I haven't really taken attention to that.
So, we'll take the attention, and I'll keep you folks updated on where we go with that. Hopefully, if half of them can attend, and do some work with them side by side, I think that will not only be fun and exciting, but it'll also be meaningful. So, we're excited to be able to do that. And then, the work that comes out of that, Mr. Bonjani's meeting, the Community Interaction meeting on September 11th, I believe, where we will be able to work out the members and have them grapple with it as well. So, I think it'll be a two-pronged approach that the board will have, and there's both students and community, I think, will be a home run, as well as, obviously, the staff is always a problem, if you're not. So, since I'm on retreat, I'll go through the items, you know, I'm gonna table what you, because I think we're having a discussion on that. Big Woods environment. As you know, we're working towards creating a paper board meeting, as I hope it's made through my hand, if I can see it up. But the reality is that we are in the process of evaluating different platforms. I know the board began, I believe, was it Mr. Malley, Mr. Miller that drove this request from the day, some months ago, and we've been working through this. What, where we, I want to keep everybody updated, because there's been a lot going on, and Mr. President has worked, you know, put some brandies into the Google platform that he's grappling with this evening, and at last meeting. We are currently, we currently have a certificate with MidJack, who has managed our board agenda previously, that's one vendor. We look at Boardbots, and we will be looking at Board Dines, which is a product that Shox has, that's something our policy folks have put together. And those will be the four platforms that I think we will, as a board and administration, grapple with to figure out what fits us best. I, in full disclosure and transparency, as the superintendent, my first responsibility to this is for the workflow in the office, we have to be able to deliver the view, right? So, we have to be able to get the motions in a concise manner, in an accurate manner. And then, the second one is the end user. And in this circumstance, I'm like the 10th board member, because in my previous position, I grappled with the motions a lot, but currently, that's with the president, personnel, Mr. Callender, Mr. Centec lead, and their staff, all putting the different agendas together and merging them, and I'm kind of without the receiver, much like you are in this case. So, the end user, obviously, is important, but I think the first job is make sure we get an accurate and clean agenda agreed. And then, the second one will be what that means to all of us. Who's here today for the board to act as a...
I believe...
I think it went out.
28th or 29th.
I think it went out. So, later this month, I will follow up in the morning with an email to all board members.
So, just as a feedback, one of the things that we can find in technology that's built on legacy systems, and then you add apps all along, is that new can get sidle, you know, where you have an application that covers one or another. At some point, one of my ex parts about having visual communications is, if you want to, being a policy-driven government party, you want to be able to access, we have it on the website, that's where you can access into the policy, which wasn't there before. I know that was, when we had that, it was two years ago, right? But still, it's not, you know, if we could have it integrated where all the different things that the board needs to have at their fingertips, including the agenda, as well as maybe having the ability to interface with other resources digitally, is that something you guys are working on, thinking about?
Yeah, I think the whole package is important, being able to have the backup, and all that available.
SharePoint and all that, you know, the whole bit.
Yeah, and I think there's a concern about the funtiness of SharePoint normally, and that's something we're also looking at, the drive is certainly competitive to that, the drive. So, we're looking at the complete package, but we want to make sure that folks in the office can get these agendas prepared at the time of the meeting. We, as end users, we have a document vigil that we could move through legally and again with accuracy in terms of where we are in the agenda. So, we are going to have, I believe, sir, again, Dr. Lowry's absent on the hill, he was Bonjani, we're gonna have big list environments on the agenda for our retreat.
Right.
So, we'll be grappling through some of that, and then we're putting out on the different vendors, as well as me and House.
So, we got that discussion at the retreat.
Right, I just wanted to update people in the board, quite frankly, on where we are, the process, my focus as superintendent, and what I want to get to delivering, that's a great work environment, that we can get our agendas created in a meaningful way, as well as a meaningful way to produce for the end users. So, that's what we're grappling with, and when we discuss that at the agenda, at the retreat, you know, the advice of the board will be critically important, and I'll ask the board, you know, to do the work that's happening at the office, to prepare it. So, that will be on, again, with your rules, that will be on the retreats, folks. Another item that is critically important this evening, we will be presenting to you, we're spending a break up for appointment at the Vice Principal Equity School, and Betty is in the audience this evening, I think, Mr. Parkson had the, what? Well, we'll take a brief recess. Yeah, we'll take a recess, well, Ms. Gordon is certainly here, and I think, Ms. Parkson definitely introduces personally each of you. Betty has been a outstanding teacher in this district, a literacy coach, and in many other roles, and she is somebody who, you know, role-play teacher, rolls her sleeves up, jumps in, and has been a mythical part of serving children for many years on literature, and I am truly proud to present her to the board tonight, the organization vice principal. So, I wanted to draw the highlight of that. If I may move off that and get back into the retreat agenda, so we know the items that are up for discussion for our agenda. The papers, the items that you spoke to me about, efficiencies in terms of transportation, we want to have that dialogue. Personalized learning is always something that we want to continue to keep reforming about, and focus is actually a big push in terms of our adult learning, student learning in our district. You mentioned strategic planning and future branding, as well as the feedback from students that, I think, was received rather well. So, also, the items that we have, and we can put them in order, and if we run over, we can pull one off the following one, but I don't think we're gonna have a discussion this evening, because I want to bring those items, as the ones that I know of so far, and make sure that I have it for all the board, or else, then we draft an agenda for our retreat that is focused and pointed to the direction which this board chooses. And with that, sir, my thoughts seem to be simple. I get it. Yes, sir.
Also, about the retreat, are we going to have the board self-evaluation ready for us to review?
A board check, Larry, would indicate that we have...
That was one of the things we had to say. Yeah, that's right. I didn't hear you say that. The board is here, right? The board, sorry, they've already done this part.
Thank you. Yes.
So, we're gonna have a little bit of a debate, once I've got what we've worked out.
Correct, and after our discussions, if something that we want to table for our next retreat, that's fine. You know, we need to make an agenda that we can focus enough on, they apologize, focus enough on easy topics and meaningful, and I think that's more important than trying to get everything done in one workshop. So, let's review our discussion on this.
Yeah, so I think we have the opportunity, probably, as is our traditional practice, and I'll have to go to another retreat in January after we reorganize, so assuming that's the board's pleasure, but I don't know, we may have to figure out again, maybe that award, you know, whether... Okay, Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, we do not have a certain exception this evening, so we will skip that. The minutes, we're not going to exact our best.
I guess when you motion to approve the minutes?
The minutes, regular only, so we're not going to exact their talk, and we're going to report and review the...
Then we'll table the...
Table it all, and we'll start talking about that.
Exactly.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien and Sally.
Can I take that, right? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Miss Mall?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjani?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Minutes are approved, have the votes in favor, not opposed. The correspondence the board has received will be noted to the record. Do you have any additional comments, sir?
Yeah. I think, according to committee reports.
Ready for committee reports, by your agreement, sir?
Okay. Mr. Gerber?
The Policy Committee last met on July 19th, and for your consideration tonight, the first reading is the revision of the policy regulations, the 26th, and to deal with suspension. And we have a new policy being proposed dealing with expulsion. This is because of changes in the state law, the old Hampton Law, 2016, Chapter 45, was recently signed into law, limiting the school district's ability to dispel suspending other students. And we want to place limits on out-of-school suspensions and expulsions in school districts. It also requires school districts to implement early protection and prevention programs to identify other students and increase school through grade two. So, for you tonight, for consideration, I need to go through a periphery of change of our policies on suspension to reflect those changes in law. In addition, as you see in the regulation, the only changes are technical, updating the term corporate on content standards, the new areas of student learning standards in two places. So, that's on the suspension policy. On the new expulsion policy, we just didn't have a policy, you know, but this proposal, we put one in our menu. It also includes, you know, and incorporate those references in state law. So, it includes limitations on out-of-school suspensions and expulsions. One other item that we discussed, and we plan to discuss again at our upcoming meeting, is something that Mr. O'Brien and the board... is something that Mr. O'Brien and board members have asked for, and that is for us to prepare a policy having to do with remote participation by school board members at board meetings. So our next meeting is this upcoming Monday, August 14th at 6:30 PM, and that will be one of the issues that we will be discussing. We have a couple of drafts of district policies in other districts, and we'll be discussing, you know, what elements are going to that proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Any questions on either policy? I assume there's more, there's a chance you'd do. I know we have early protection, you know, program in place, so this is really just formalizing what we're doing anyway, perhaps.
Right. That was a question I asked, and again, we reflect on that.
Very good, no, I think it's sound. Okay. Anything else with the room in the next meeting?
Well, we put out numbers, I assume the agenda that we'll be looking at, but we'll be before you back.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reddy.
Yes, the advocacy. The Senator Mina Rival has been chosen by the governor to be Director of ABC's of this position until, and the public board is holding a dimension on 14, to select another person to fill that position. So needs also on the educational committee. And Mr. Rival, Senator Mina Rival has been very, very good to us, so we have to see if we can get a new person to fill the shoes. I asked if that person's going to go on to the educational committee, and they did not have that answer because that's appointed by the group there, so they don't look, put him in here or somebody else, so we have to wait to see who's going to fill that shoes until that point, and then we'll see. Also, the safety committee, we met on August 1st, and Mr. Samson and Mr. Able have a line, have a line when we're discussing the long-term procedures, protocols, that they have, some of them have been changed and we're reviewing for our project. So that one is training our teachers and making sure that they're getting proper instruction on how to handle situations in lockouts, or even the natural, for a while. They're also teaching substantive to make sure they're receiving the proper training they come forward. Also, at the meeting, Ms. Mallie brought out the after-school activities, and we have a protocol for teaching PTO, PTA, and also the West Wolf programs and all of that. We have a protocol for safety, you know, what they're supposed to do. So what we're looking right now is we're looking into, knowing to who, discussing with the other group, you know, Mr. Samson, Sadler, we're looking into that right now, so.
Good. Excellent.
So, you know, they, what, there are a lot of protection of teachers right now, to teach them what to have in situations. Also, on the ESLVOs, three is progressing with that, we're doing processes on our way, and also with the teachers' training, with our private office principals and the ESL, CL, Mr. John Moore, he's wanting to provide his training to us, and we'll set that up somewhere around the end of the month. Mr. Samson, do you want to...
Yeah, so we confirmed with him, since presentation at safety, we confirmed with him the morning of the 30th, the exact time, and right now, we schedule the middle school south, however, we will be expecting an invitation to the board, and depending on turnout, we may move it, but for right now, certainly the middle school south media center, time to be determined, but it is morning, and it's on the 30th. And as soon as we confirm the exact time, an invitation will be going out to board members, as well as the principals, and ESLVO three is the training sector of HOPD, and also Mr. Ozil has extended that to the high school. He's a very, some of them, I've seen him, we had him in an office, I said, seven years ago now, very engaging speaker, has a lot of good information on the balance between administration and all of this, so it should be a good program.
My understanding is that all day?
Well, it's all training, Mr. Moore is only going to be there three and a half hours. So we have, the fact that he has some HOPD people speaking, and they're doing this and other topics, which I'm sure should be interesting for making...
How does it resonate with the board?
As, you know, as indicated, the board is welcome to attend, I believe.
Yes, we'll get the exact, we will get an invitation as soon as the time is confirmed.
As we've, super, the board special on the board, have properly gave the credits, I think we should put the school board's...
Yes, we're, we reach out to Mr. Mike off, and we will, we will give board credit for that, so we'll make sure...
That'll go a little bit towards continuing our certification to next to the board. But it begins with Mr. Reddy, I want to thank you. You probably, something that I grabbed in my earlier comments, in, well, safety, you reminded me that the school does a training for transportation for incoming parents, and Mr. Samson gave you some information. You're going to see, the school will be available to transportation department, parents to appoint their children, which is the first time we're writing on bus, and you want to go into a little more detail?
Yes, and more details on our website under the parent tab, and then we have a kindergarten area, and you shared that with us earlier, so there is some information about the bus, about bus stops and those kind of things, and I believe it's 91, it's on a brochure, they're 92 on the check...
Three, nine, and two.
For that, or seatbelt, I think the seatbelts are, when they get to middle school, the biggest thing is a combination lock, but at kindergarten, the biggest thing is a seatbelt. So, you know, it is valid transportation, it's under seatbox, under standard seat number, they will get a bus assignment, and...
Is that during the week on most days, or is it specifically?
Ninety-three, 30, 91, if I have it right.
I think it's nine, two.
Nine, it's over there.
October 24th, right?
October 24th, so.
Yeah, so we...
Or, if you have trouble, I tell you, you can call the board office if you have any other questions.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Reddy.
Minutes are approved through that session?
Okay, through. Thank you, sir. And the absence of our education chairman, Mr. Wilson, you wanted to be honest?
Thank you, Mr. Ozil, I coordinated earlier, so I'll take the...
I'll take the...
I coordinated, I think, the current area. We actually, you may recall, we had two months of committee briefs to go back through, so I'm going to see if I can rise to this chair and read them up. Two topics that came up at both meetings, we discussed the middle school band schedule and changes that we would make as a result of that. In one meeting, we were, the administration was charged with reviewing and evaluating the compromise, in the next meeting, we were able to achieve that compromise from the faculty committee and share it up for review. That information has since been sent out. It essentially creates the band schedule as an elected choice, however, the students still have two other marking periods that they can choose from within that. That's the brief version of that. There's some other options within that that allow students to get, I think, a more personalized approach to whether or not, or how we're going to approach their band construction. I think it's important to note that the overall goals of doing that were to reduce the amount of students that were being pulled from core areas, and the amount of times that they were being pulled from core areas, while also invigorating the integrity of the band from creating consistency, I go, I can certainly count it out throughout the year. We were able to certainly achieve that partnership with the two band teachers, the band teachers for each of the middle schools, and yet create something that we think achieved those goals while personalizing that approach just a little bit more. So we're excited to see that a lot, that has since been announced to the public, and we're seeing students now select the like this.
Sure, sounds like a nice swing win. Hold up.
And from there, we also, in both agendas, just to make sure that I have my information back here, sorry, a couple of the pieces that we put through that are, have already approved motion, but we approved the sabbatical, the co-Boy came in and did a presentation for our sabbatical proposal, which would extend some of the enrichment opportunities, that has since been approved. We also presented a job description change for the supervisor's special education position. Again, that job description has been approved. We also then shared a new structure that we're using, or having. As you know, and whereas you may be aware, in September 2018, the District Education Advisory Committee has a component of achievement, area evaluation, etc., not sunset that part of the provision. We still believe it's an incredibly important piece to have something still in the middle of that framework from billboards, who will improve it, and also help organize and create consistency in how we deliver our professional learning for all of our staff. So we shared that, what that architecture will be, that will be our learning design team, and again, you're going to see that information coming up in our next board meeting when we approve the district wide, or when we, you have the opportunity to review the district wide professional, what we all, hopefully, now start charging for our district wide professional learning plan. We also, at both meetings, discussed the New Jersey School Board Student Achievement Report, it's going to be part of our ongoing discussion, and a core discussion work that we'll do as a, as a committee. At both meetings, I'm sorry, the July 10th meeting, we did discuss the paperless environment, I think one of the paperless board environment, one of the big takeaways from that conversation was taking the prototype that we have, linking the backup information, both confidential as appropriate, public as appropriate, linking those specifically within the document as hyperlink, so you'll see behind it as I'm scrolling, anything that is blue is hyperlink, or you'll see on your touchscreen, anything that is there that is blue is hyperlink, which will take you to the backup. One of the discussions we had was about, you know, how would the public feel if they inadvertently clicked or clicked on confidential pieces of backups? Would they feel skeptical as if they were not being, maybe hiding something? So we are, again, going to bring that to our board retreat and discuss how to handle that, but you'll notice in the agenda, we have it specifically labeled now as public backup and confidential backup, because there are those matters that we may possible confidential, that the general public is not pretty to. But linking that directly to the document came out of that education committee. Another topic was, from previous meetings, we were asked to come back to end committee and share the possibility of expanding NJ Bizztown to all of our schools. In our review, in the administration's review of that work, that would be not impossible, but logistically impractical to put that in, you know, on the schedules. You either send one team of 60 district wide, which would be very difficult to create consistency in the application of that across buildings, or you would do, you would have to do 60 teams per school, which also presents its own logistical concerns, plus that the bus, plus that we're pushing out of the program that already exists. So in our review of that, that was not logistically practical, but it is an open opportunity if individual building would like to take that work, it's an opportunity on their students. We'll just make sure I've got my notes correct, and that I didn't miss anything, I think. Last one, for us. ESLV, whatever was discussed, again, we got on our last board agenda, what that is part of our ESL, our model ESL program, we do that every year, essentially once you get a certain number of single language speaking students, in other words, students that all live in one language, then technically, you're supposed to have a bilingual program, where instructions are delivered in both languages. You can apply for a bilingual waiver, if you can prove that the program that you will have, you'll still benefit from children, that's what we do with our shelter workplace program, our SIAR program, our IAB program, some of the other pieces of this waiver in our overall ESL plan, that is what we're going to see to improve, so, without sharing out, through the education committee, I think, the last. Yeah, the education committee raises two meetings. Mr. Von Janne, did I miss anything?
Didn't miss anything, but something I'd like to add is the conversation on the band schedule, it was a pretty lively conversation, took place over a couple of meetings. I'd really like to congratulate staff for having worked so hard because of the importance of taking care of this quickly, because it meant notifying parents who wanted to change their schedules, and then setting up schedules for the year, we know from conversations that that's one of the tougher things that schools have to go to, so I'd really like to thank staff for how hard they worked on that, so.
I agree with what you mentioned, certainly wasn't collaborative, right? Down, right down to the conversation of what are our common points, how do we make sure that it's consistent in how we're answering questions? So that, you know, change is hard, you know, we get that on screen, you know, the band program is, you know, people who go into any one of these programs, hold them dearly, we made the program, they hold them dearly, a change to it represents something that can be expressed, we want to make sure that they're consistent. Derek Loda and Maranals Statch is willing to collaborate with the administration and each other to make sure that that consistency is, again, evidence to how we were able to maintain or invigorate the integrity of that program, so. Excited to see how that rolls out. I should stress that we did promise to the end committee that we would run it for next school year, but we'll evaluate this effectiveness to continue to meet those goals, should we need to make adjustments, we will, or should we need to move in a different direction?
True. I also would like to congratulate the administration for the work they've done here, because we're trying to do many things at the same time. On one hand, we want to make sure that every student has an opportunity to have as many electives as possible as they go through their educational studies. At the same time, part of our thoughts now are talking about play, action, and purpose, so that by the time the students get into the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, they are able to begin to direct themselves into certain areas where they may put additional effort, and this, using the band as an example, we're able to incorporate both elements of this, to give that the choice, and it fits into our educational goals. So I congratulate you on doing this kind of work, taking this attitude.
Your flowers?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to step back to the comment about the day, Bizztown, I do appreciate you doing the villages and leading to that. I still have, would like to follow up with the point of equity to all of the ECT students across the district. I understand that that particular program may not be feasible, but I would hope that we're going to be able to look into other programs from the other schools, like Al, maybe off-site trips, or something like that. I know we have the GNT committee, we worked very hard to try to level across the district so that every child is getting the same opportunities, and I just hope that that will still continue, even though that particular one is not going to be an option.
So I'll make, I think, two, four points on that, that not that we will be, but that we are continuing to look at those things, and always offering those opportunities, not that it's the same opportunities across the district, well, equitable opportunities across the district, certainly committed to that and will continue to do that. Absolutely.
As you were discussing, like, the question was, it's not like a one floor room, it's located upwards, so logistically it could be difficult to get a lot of kids there, is there a way to replicate similar features of a performance, I don't believe that you would work in that sort of community, you know, again?
Yeah, so those are some of the conversations that we're having, even, I'll go with an overview, if, again, you would like one, you don't feel free to ask questions, but when we look at, say, the Knowledge Expo, so the Knowledge Expo, which we just did, we have all students out presenting sort of their passion projects, one of the things that we're looking at with that opportunity is to change it slightly, start asking if one, two, two additional questions to their research, so not just what is something that your passion is after that research, but what is a significant issue within that area of action, and what's your proposed solution? Now, as I'm having to do, it's almost like a junior TED Talk experience, it begins to really mimic the public speaking aspect, collaboration aspect of the network, and then how to deliver that, have some of those students begin to deliver that. Then, this may take us, I don't think we'll get this piece of it off for next year, one of our other conversations we're having around this, a lot of logistics in this piece too, but it's in-house. So then in those presentations, could we invite local businesses to come in and hear those pitches, and perhaps we can create sort of a junior fellowship opportunity for students that are entering the middle school, or district graders that present their passion projects, and if they're adopted by a local business that oversees, a way of leveraging those solutions. There's a lot to that, that is very, 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 very idea, but it's those types of things that we're continuing to push on, and see where we can get that in-house.
Very good.
In addition, sir, as I mentioned, I've begun dialogue with our work, School District and Real Regional Partnership, I would like Bizztown experience, that we would collaborate, again, infancy, but just so the board is aware that there's a lot of these things that are happening in the regular weeks in the community, quite frankly. that are happening in the regular weeks in the community quite regularly, and that partnership is powerful, so that Dr. Hibs and Mr. Sam, regional and I, have had some similar conversations about building our own like program, and even have the, you know, the middle school, the high school partnership that exists. So it could be really not only a free learning experience, but something where we can leverage our partnership with a local partner, so we're excited about that, again, intimacy, but since the topic came up, we want, the board to be aware that we're working on things constantly to provide most, and most opportunity for our children, I think that's what it means more.
Yeah, as I've noted before, as you all know, a lot of great things we picked around now, so it all fits in there, you know, discussions somewhere, so again, we're exploring.
It's a board day.
It's a good board day, yeah, we got sort of good.
Real quick.
Yeah, 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 it's true. All right, George, well, I'll leave, moving on now to community interactions, don't you mind?
So Mr. Rizzo mentioned the next community interaction will be September 11th, we did not mention this in the last meeting, but I do want to note that the fact that we haven't met doesn't mean that work hasn't continued in the background. Or the piece, we, for example, the piece that Mr. Rizzo mentioned about having an open house for local realtors, it is continuing efforts to make sure we reach as many members of the public, as many members of the community, and that includes community group, people who might be hoping to join our community, making sure they're aware of what's going on in our schools. So the activity continues even though we haven't been here.
I think that's great, our school leadership is really evolving, is developing off of a great foundation, and, you know, when you look back at the incredible positive changes that the government realized in the last few years, I think it's great for real to do that refreshment, so I've been talking to families, and we really can help community what makes us special, so it's great. Mr. Miller?
The Friday meeting, it happened to our last meeting. The Montana School Board Association's first meeting for the upcoming two years is going to be Thursday, September 7th, that's close again. The topic is going to be social, emotion, and behavioral of students. On Monday, we workshop the county, we're hoping to round out the discussion and networking session, more information should be coming out shortly, it goes a lot for myself. New to the county this year in February, we're hoping to actually bring in benefits two, three, and four to the county level meetings. So if anyone needs that, maybe in training, or wants to go into one and get just a refresher, we can do that now, February county meeting. I attended a leadership program from the Jersey School Board on July 27th, and the topic was social media, balancing personal, many rights, and code of ethics. The program was very forward. They also gave us a first look at the new superintendent evaluation that's going to come out for next year. The new evaluation will allow for the superintendent to accomplish evidence, evidence, which are going to be in this document, the evaluation will be more of a standard based type document, with additional changes being added such as general responsibilities, and mission, vision, and core values. Other changes will include the mandatory pre-conference meeting with superintendent, there'll be a summary narrative template, but also allow for an overall assessment of standards for the superintendent. And the new system will change your temporary proficient development improvement, on self trajectory, and our service. And this new evaluation was developed by New Jersey School Boards with cooperation of the Superintendent's Association. Finally, the New Jersey School Board Association had a dialogue on topic of self-board evaluations, and at this time, they're recommending, which they've done in the past, that the superintendent and the business administrator also complete the board member evaluation, but they only complete the portion that evaluates the board and whole map, this helping individually, yes, so they're running that, if the superintendent and business administrator want to. We have, we'll be discussing that in August, if you want to jump on and get your evaluation done. Big enough, right?
Great, uh, we've already wrote some value operations, Mr. Ron, what do you think?
Just a little piece of New Jersey School Board's evaluation, we always like to acknowledge the different things that are happening here in the district, and Mr. Rizzo corrected me is again, it was in two or three sessions that this district has been approved for presenting it.
There's some debate. We believe it.
It's at least two.
Yeah, we're still waiting, uh, but by the way, Melissa's had some information, two that we know.
Okay, and one of the other things is that, something that is coming back from New Jersey School Board's Association, they haven't done in many, many years, is they're going to be doing a leadership weekend sometime in 2018, similar to what they do with, with November orientation. Right now, I'm not sure if it'll be just presidents and vice presidents, or anybody who wants to be in a leadership position. I should find out more about that, actually, I've been asked to sort of continue putting that together, maybe there's more about me to be on that.
Well, I think the more inclusive it is for folks, it's great professional level to, and to each board. Thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Allen, what's operations?
Yes, operations went on August 1st, and we have a whole agenda, so. Number one, we talked about food services. The USDA mandates that all of the boards that participate in the national school lunch program use the same paid lunch program, which is a B O E tool, which will result in a 10 cent increase from 2.75 to 2.85, still keeps us under the maximum level. And that is on page three, on our agenda for tonight, for approval. The committee has, has recommended acceptance of approval of that. We also discussed revisions to policy impact, do we want to have it on hand in policy committee? Make this about company meal charges, and we want to refer to the policy committee for review. Okay, overall, we're continuing to support participation in the lunch program. They have, I think I've heard that says in the past that the salt requirements have been relaxed, and we are now allowing contact center instead of season. And a request has been sent to replace whole grain pasta, the white pizza, waiting to hear back from the state on that, which will definitely replace, for kids that are always getting concerned, they prefer the white pasta, and ground pasta just doesn't go over as well as white pasta, we're hoping that we can get that going forward.
We're getting a little bit of a notification, basically.
A little bit.
Squeezed about.
We're also sending out the warning board to parents, targeting announcements to schools regarding the birthday celebrations and using the food services for that. They've designed colorful menus, and we have, we have a side job, we have a service line, and encourage quick choices for the kids. We're also working with the schools and the PTOs and PTA's about using box lunch with a tail trip, so that's an ongoing discussion. And also, my growing up, it hasn't happened to me, but was a last minute option, on tail trip day, if your child gets lunch, you could always call the school and ask for our box lunch, to go with children, that's information that we need to make sure of that. We're also continuing our shared services with Farmingdale, about 75 lunches and 30 breakfasts a day, so that's our food services. Next, we talked about our summer projects, which are moving along very well. L O P booth is 90 complete. The asshole was supposed to start by the week this week, so it should be, um, going right now. The floor, the garden, it had to be replaced, that's 90% done. The L O P gym, and sanding, and bourbon gym, everything is on schedule, all the projects, so we're going, will surely be done by September before the kids are having buildings. We have all the screens on the windows are complete, they're in, they're all up. We also have seen local lights going into all the schools, outside of boiler room kitchens, and the home entrance with gas ranges, and we also have a new project, courtyard playground at Adelphia. The little types is going to be solely the playground, the ground, and the PTA are going to maintain it, so let's see how that works out, we're excited about that. Okay, on E C F, we have, occupancy sensors are in some of the schools, we are going to have it installed in all of the schools, and that will help say a lot. Basically, if they're not in the room, the lights are going to go off, emotion detecting, if the light's being on, they'll go off automatically.
You mean, the lights won't be on, or like the?
They shouldn't be now, but this will help us recombine. And then also LED lighting in all the schools, we're replacing the lights with LED lights, and there's a new meeting, we're waiting for the date for the next meeting, that will update, we're going to back to that at the end of the E C F. And then the last thing, we talked about transportation, which is now going to be a retreat topic, which is, we are constantly continuing car cover team group transportation, transporting 6,000 plus students every day safely and efficiently. We have a new one through form, we used it last year for the first time, it's now officially called, the new title of the form is going to be?
Plus stop adjustment request.
Yes, plus stop adjustment request, so we basically, we're using it to request changes to the staff. Unfortunately, last year, kind of got used for a little bit of complaining, so we're trying to make sure that it's used for, for requesting staff, and if, they will all be reviewed at time, no matter, but they may be denied or approved, depends on what the request exactly is. Okay, the routes, for the most part, we completed, there's some tweaks as new potential efficiencies arise, but we are continuing our efficiency with three tier routes, as we have in the past. We're also continuing to reduce repetitive staff, so it saves time to get students to school on time. One unfortunately is the bids came in higher this year, the first bidder did not bid, so the second and third bids are higher, first student has the majority of the big buzzers, I think they're all in the agenda, the summary of all of the buzzers are in the agenda this evening. Like that's, uh?
We did with old four.
We did with old four, okay, thank you. Mr. Jack, I advise that we may need a new trash truck replaced, and we'll decide again at the next meeting. And then of course, fleet maintenance is, we have shared services with the Monique Regional replaced, and now Shore Regional is interested in shared services for fleet maintenance as well, so that's very good, and that we all.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, appreciate it. Was it a busy session?
Yes.
With your permission, sir, I'd like to move the public comment into the agenda. Dr. Lo, it's, we've got some hard to be Facebook, we're quite a little bit of a term with, so Dr. Lo will be joining us, and we'll worry about our connections, I'd like to move quickly, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
So comments from the board for the first couple of comments, I'll have for the education representatives, comments from the board for the last 45 minutes, we can have to do this sort of file 64.1. Yep, so what do we, Mr. O'Brien, do you wish to? The comments from the board at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Bell, I live in North Carolina.
Can someone provide? Do you want to make sure that?
Sorry, it's open.
What's Miss Allen's?
Wendy Bell. I'm a parent, child was moved to the middle school north, and I'm very pleased with the education that she received here, and her goal since grade was to go to our world business administration learning center, and she was exactly what she saw. My issue is that we did encounter something for the first time this year that, I can only say was a communication issue. She had a medical issue that kept her out of school, where she required a tutor this spring, and from the parent's perspective, we had to deal with the nurse, we had to deal with that, we had to deal with the last principal. We were assigned a tutor, we made that tutor, all of a sudden we got a call for a second tutor. Then our understanding was the tutor was to teach, but we had a tutor who basically said, well, no, I'm not here to teach, I'm here, basically she was a proffer. Well, I'll teach her this because I'm nice, but then we called guidance, and I was like, no, she's supposed to be teaching. Then there were issues with the tutor, basically we were in school south, or we were in school north, and our daughter kept saying, I don't think I'm making all the assignments, I, there's gotta be more, I'm seeing these reminding notices for chapter eight, and the tutor's only giving me three chapters six, you know, I'm only in school in two weeks, and I'm already two chapters behind. And now they're us getting involved and getting involved with the teachers, finding out that apparently, we still not completely understand, but apparently she was getting one folder, the tutor was getting one folder from somewhere in middle school north, but there was another folder three times the size of assignments that she wasn't picking up, and it wasn't fitting for her. So it was just, it was just one thing after another. The park exam was an issue. We know that her grade, her year, it's the first year that the park completed requirement for graduation, and she was scheduled to take the annual park for this year, and we kept asking, what about it, we actually had doctors know because they're concerned about her being able to sit with me a lot of time. And recently, as of Friday, before she returned to school, we were told, oh, she said, no, no problem, that'll follow her to high school, and my daughter didn't really want to miss it, she wanted to take it, she didn't want to have to take the makeup, so she didn't want to miss more core classes, which by the way, she dropped Van because she missed core classes. You know, I appreciate the vice principal calling us back on a Friday night at 7:00 and assuring us all this, but come Monday morning, when we finally met with the principal, and it finally felt like we had one person to talk to, it was the day our daughter was returning to school, that there were specific accommodations she needed, he said, well, no, the park is required, she's probably going to need to take it, but we'll let you know. Three days later, they left us knowing, yes, she has to take it, well, now we can just administer. So now she had taken it as makeup, had taken it where she missed more core classes, and it just, if it were just better communication, better communication with us as parents, to know what to expect, what to expect from the tutor, just something almost nice to help other parents, thank goodness with us, it's a one and done, I can't imagine the parents having to deal with this on an ongoing basis. The other thing that was just a little bit of an issue for me is, we're told to talk to the vice principal, we're told, well, we can't transfer, you don't need to call back, you call the phone tree, it says, do you want to talk to the vice principal? Hit this number, and you hit that number, you have a name. Well, the phone tree says, do you want at least one principal or less vice principal? I don't know. And sometimes we call the office, we have to ask somebody else to tell you. I mean, it's just, it's frustrating as a parent, what we have to do, we've got a child who's got to recover and doesn't need these stresses, she had a perfect attendance record until, I mean, she, school is her thing, and it just, she, we assured her, you're not the fault, like she dealt, like, you know, you're not going to take the park in this class, and she had a big part in this class. It can be avoided with some other procedures, something for the class.
Thank you, so for your feedback, and I'm sure as our initiative team is listening to this, if they answer the questions or if there's anything you can do, please reach out to them, I'm sure they'll be happy to take your feedback until we move to addressing those issues. And congratulations on getting into the school of choice, and it's terrific, I'm sure.
And by the way, Ms. Reuben was one of her teachers back in Atlantic City.
Further comments at this time? Seeing outside the committee, a little bit closed. Welcome back, Dr. Lo. For the background noise, maybe you can read while we're talking?
If someone, if someone would, uh, let me know.
Once again, welcome back, Dr. Lo, sir, can we take the agenda and the agenda?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Ron.
I have some questions, my horse.
I'm redirecting the backup for 3,000-1, do you want some other readings?
Oh, are you going to correct that right now?
Yes, I am. As soon as somebody moves a second, I'll read it and correct.
That's what I'm telling you, that's scary. All right, well, move it then.
Okay, I'm watching, I, Ms. Allen.
Second.
Second, my, Ms. Ron, you ready?
On the agenda, any agenda, please, on these adjustments, handle readings on 3,000-1, on Ms. Natalie and Ms.. one, on Ms. Natalie and Mr. Harding, please reverse the schools completely. It will be Natalie from Grandtown to Greenville and Harding from Greenville to Grandtown.
Does that make sense?
On 3,000 dash fourteen, please insert the name Sharon Devine, Sharon, lowercase spelling, Devine, D-E-V-I-N-E. Step four, M-A, $54,750. On 4,000 dash one, please insert the name Miraya Espinoza. Miraya is M-I-R-E-Y-A, Espinoza, E-S-P-I-N-O-S-A, $40,000. Prograded, effective August 23rd, or sooner. On for 4,002, please insert the name Lindsay Kline, $40,000, effective August 23rd, or sooner. On 6,000 dash four, please insert the amount $17,905.21. Did there change?
Could you repeat that part?
Sir, can I take that round?
You do.
Mrs. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, the same on 3,000, one, 3,002, and 3,003.
Thank you. Mr. Gerb?
Yes, the following extensions, 3,000 dash one, 3,000 dash two, and 3,000 dash three.
Thank you. Dr. Lo? You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. O'Reilly?
Yes, yes, definitely a change on 3,001, 3,002, and 3,003.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda, any agenda is approved. Eight votes in particular, not those, we give a sentence, so it'll on 3,001, two, and three for the record. Sir, is that time for the second half of the comment?
The only one.
First half, time for the education, the thermists, comments will be posted by the next 45 minutes, and will be, we have been in the court, Twitter's filed 164.1, and it is regular, it is a dream to teach. The office, we respect the time before, we'll keep the president's orders to be applied, for the future, for the open. So the further comments at this time.
Being loud.
Being loud, before we close.
Close.
Is that, yes, sir. Is there, we will say we had a discussion or something?
I think you covered that in your earlier part, we mentioned, so we have a discussion. Do you have a question?
No, thanks very much, Dave.
Right, the only one was, if a board member has an incremental item they'd like us to consider, if you may call, just press the call before we begin the meeting, so that the board can be included.
Absolutely. I know we've already received different pieces, but I encourage the board member to reach out to me, back to all the stuff, so, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, so, no session, I'm going to move.
I believe there's no further questions this evening. Want somebody to add something?
All right.
Make a motion, have a turn.
Second.
For your turn. Thank you, Dr. Lo.